United States of America. And Republic of Northwest States. One nation under God, indivisible, living in the essence.
You please. Oh, I certainly would love to do that. Frost.
Here.
No.
Here.
Ben Joseph.
Here.
Tom. Ron. Gordon. Carson.
Here.
Oh, here. Tire.
Here.
We're six tonight.
Okay, so we have any correspondence?
None with I know.
None?
None.
Um, okay, student activities. So, welcome to Rajan.
Thank you.
We met him in May. That's it.
Uh, can I screenshot?
Yes, please.
You can. We laugh too. Stand over there like Tash used to do.
Oh, it's okay.
Stand where your coffee.
Wherever you would like.
Alright, so. First and foremost, um, this being my first meeting, I wanna formally introduce myself a little bit. My name is Rajan Sakapme, I'm a senior. Um, and I kind of, I put four photos up here that have summed up how I've chosen to spend my four years here at Stevenson. Um, primarily, I am the varsity mock trial team captain here at Stevenson. And so, law and the legal field has a special place in my heart. Uh, both my dad and my uncle, um, are trial attorneys and litigators. And so, coming from that experience and sort of having legal field mentors has been really empowering to me. Um, I am the president of our fire club, which is our fostering intercultural respect and empowerment club. So, in that role, I work with like-minded student peers to be an effective voice for all students here at Stevenson. Um, paralleling down the diversity role, I'm the diversity director of the Statesman newspaper. And so, I get to do the talking aspect and the writing aspect of it with the Statesman. And I think if I have one word to kind of sum up, it's, it's student advocacy and leadership. I love being able to empower my fellow peers, um, to, to be their best self and to be a voice, um, within the Stevenson community and abroad. So, I'm really excited to continue that path, um, in this new year. So, the big, uh, two events, I think, that I wanted to highlight this, this month in August was just networking for our freshmen. Um, the big one was freshman orientation day, FOD. Uh, the day before school started, our freshmen came all together with their, their mentors and got to experience what Stevenson was like, without like all the hassle of upperclass and being around. And this was a really cool experience, I think, for freshmen to come together and feel as though they're one Stevenson community. Right? You're coming from six different, seven different middle schools, but now we are one Stevenson patriot. And so, I think this was really fun for both the freshmen and for their mentors. Same was the freshman mixer, you know, one week into school to have like a mini freshman party, I think was really cool for them to be able to experience that, um, along themselves and, and to network with one another and get to know their fellow peers. And, and the PPA put it, like hoping that some of these people in here will be their best friends four years down the road. And so, building those connections early on, I think, was just a really, um, fun and cool experience to see for our freshmen, looking back. So, in academic, um, a lot of our competitive-based teams had successes over the summer and through August. Um, on the top left, our Envirathon team competed at a national competition in Geneva, and so they were able to win out there. In the bottom right, the Stevenson's FCCLA, which is Family Career Community Leaders of America, uh, had their national conference in Seattle, so that was a really fun experience for that small group of girls to be able to go out to Seattle and have a bonding experience and, and really connect over that club. In the middle, our science Olympia team competed at a national tournament at MSU. So, that was similar to Envirathon, just being able to, to put on their event. On the top right, our hosted team had their national tournament in Houston this year. And so, that was really fun, I think, for medically inclined students to be able to, to have that experience with, with healthcare professionals in Dallas. And then, on the bottom left, our esports team had a national competition over the summer in which they competed. And the student perspective of this was, from their coach, that it was really empowering for, for these students to feel like esports is something that they can do competitively. Uh, many students feel as though esports is something that can get forgotten about or not thought of as sort of a club or a competitive event. Um, but this really went to show to them and, and to, to those in the community that, you know, you can get scholarships for esports. Um, it, it involves teamwork and it involves community building. Um, it's a team-wide event, and so that was, I think, really empowering for those students to be able to experience on a national level. Another big, uh, networking event was Street Fest, which just happened on Saturday, um, put on wonderfully by NHS. Great community building event, the weather was beautiful out, all the like sixty-plus booths that we had, they had like a new stage design, um, that they piloted this year, the ceremony, the fireworks. It was a perfect Saturday night to come together as one Stevenson community. Um, and NHS did a fantastic job as they always do. Fine arts was kind of light this month, um, they, they're just starting to get going. The band had their exhibition night prior to the opening football game two weeks ago. And so, they were able to put on for, for some, for themselves and for their families as well, sort of what they'll be playing at the halftime show. Um, and just to get back out there was, I think, really fun for them. On the bottom right, our theater had a national conference in New York. And so, this was really cool, I think, for them to be able to experience theater live. Um, and I know our theater sponsor is just really passionate about giving them those real-world experiences. And so, that was a fun event for them in August. Athletics, uh, I broke athletics down into two slides, because there's so much that's been going on athletically, um, over the past two months. And so, I'll start in the middle. Both our boys and girls cross-country team hosted a regional, uh, sort of like practice scrimmage event with other teams. And so, that was collaborative on their part, they worked together, both the boys team and the girls team, um, both did very well respectively in their events. On the bottom left, uh, football had a great two night, great two opening, um, home games. They had the home opener two weeks ago against Taft. And then, um, last week, this past Friday, against Libertyville, great atmosphere. I mean, just for our freshmen to be able to get out, get together, see what a Friday night light experience is like. You know, we see it at, at college levels, we see it in the NFL, but being, I think, for our freshmen to be able to see it at the high school level. Um, the themes were blackout and then camo, and just seeing a sea of Stevenson students in black t-shirts. And then, camo was just such a great community networking event, it was a perfect, perfect night. Um, and the, the Pats won at their home opener, so that just made it that much better. On the bottom right, pickleball is sort of the intramural that I'm highlighting this month. Um, and so, I was talking to the pickleball coach, it's an IM club, um, and the, these two happen to be brothers, I believe, that, that were running it. Uh, pickleball has really taken off at Stevenson. I know, I think we're all aware of how popular pickleball is nationally amongst adults, but even among students, I was talking to the sponsor, they have like hundreds of students showing up to these tournaments and to these practices for tryouts every weekend. And so, being able to see, you know, Stevenson students engaged in that and being able to do that at the intramural level, um, has just been really fun for them. Continuing with athletics, um, bass fishing had a regional competition that they participated in in August, and they did very well at that. And then, both of our golf teams, um, two weeks ago had a tournament against Mundeline on separate dates, where we had a photographer go out and take like professional shots of golf, which was really cool to see. Um, and both of them have started, both teams, both the boys and the girls varsity team have started off very, very strong. So, upcoming, uh, the big one next week is gonna be homecoming and all the festivities that come with homecoming, the assembly, the football game, and then the ultimate dance. I know class board and student council have been working tirelessly to prepare their, uh, their assembly and they, the spirit days that they're planning all week long. And so, freshmen especially are very excited for that experience and kind of getting to experience their first homecoming, that whole week of celebration. Um, and then band play and the, uh, theater group will really be kicking it off in the beginning of October. And so, this is what I'm really excited about, this is something I've piloted as my own little spin on this. Um, I mentioned in my introduction that the Statesman has been a huge, huge part of my experience here at Stevenson. And I was told that board members do not actually get a copy of the Statesman. And so, I have, thank you for all of you, of my very, our very own Statesman.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so, my goal in this, um, going forward, every meeting will be to kind of highlight one story within the Statesman that highlights a different perspective of Stevenson that we don't get to see through the photos of the Daily Digest or the photos of our athletics and our, and our, um, competitions especially. And so, the Statesman has really, over the years, been able to target select group of students that don't get to be seen otherwise. And so, we'll be picking, um, articles for you all to, to sort of spotlight on every issue from here on out, so.
Right.
That's all I got.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Grab a cookie, Android.
I will.
Alright.
Okay. Have any visitor statements tonight? Okay.
Alright, um, we are always excited, um, to have our student activities report, but then also the opportunity to honor some students. So, uh, tonight, Mark, we have the opportunity to honor some students with the ambassador award.
Yeah, absolutely, we've got three students who have earned a perfect score on the ACT. Um, and just puts this in perspective, um, that would be the top point two percent of test takers in the world of taking ACT, so it's pretty extraordinary. Um, we've got two of them here tonight. Um, the first, um, who was not able to make it, um, was Matthias Clark. Um, but we do have Frithi Sudarkar. And to have a good rap.
Congratulations.
And we also have Lillian Wang.
Congratulations. So, do we have any questions for us?
So, is it hard?
It was long.
Long?
Yeah, three hours.
Preparation, but yeah, it is pretty long, yeah.
Was, was this the first, first, your first bar?
That's my first ACT.
Yeah, mine too.
Wow.
Wow. You're done.
Took Mr. Mazuka thirty-seven times.
But I got there.
You got there. You got there.
It's all about the destiny.
Perseverance.
Right. Are you both seniors?
I'm a senior, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Good luck and enjoy your senior year and congratulations, that's an incredible accomplishment.
Great job.
We're proud.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Alright, um, well, being able to honor students is always the best part of the meeting. But the second best part of the meeting is always our team presentation, so thank you, uh, for being here. And, uh, you know, for the past couple of years, we've been exploring, um, the impact of our SCL initiative and the work that our amazing, uh, faculty and staff members have been doing. So, tonight, we have representatives from social studies division, and Brad, I'll let you introduce your team and tee us up for the night.
Certainly, um. Uh, it's exciting for me to have the opportunity to introduce our AP US history team, affectionately known as A-Push around the division, around the school, around the community, because it's a team that, oh, about fifteen years ago, I've been on for about ten to twelve years myself. So, it's exciting for me to see the types of changes and evolution that has taken place with the activities students are engaging in, the way they're working with history, uh, and the way it's coming alive differently for students than it was back when I had the opportunity to teach it. A lot of technology has impacted. But really, um, if you, if you look at the tenets of transformative SCL, um, how that really blends with inquiry, the work that you do in social studies, it's a very natural fit and has really pushed a lot of work that they're gonna share and tell you all about in terms of students having greater choice and, and voice in, in the work that they're doing. Um, culminating in some really exciting things, I don't wanna get too far ahead of us. Got a, have started last year, continuing this year, um, that really are, are also taking us in a place that's not just about, um, kind of our social awareness of students and, in terms of the casting competencies and relationship building, but even starting to bridge more into intentionality around self-awareness, self-management. I think those things you see are really exciting. And I will let Kristen, um, our team leader, take over from here.
I think we're all gonna come up with that, so it's kind of an awkward, we're just gonna stand up here, if that's alright with you all.
Wonderful.
Of course.
Um, so, hi, I'm Kristen Barrett, I'm the team lead, uh, for AP US history. This is my seventeenth year teaching at Stevenson. Uh, in addition to A-Push, I also teach our AP, uh, US government, uh, and I'm a JV, uh, swim coach for our boys swimming and diving team.
Hi, my name is Cathy Swanson, this is my sixth year teaching at Stevenson, it's my twentieth year overall. Um, in addition to teaching AP US history, I also teach AP imitology.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Dunn, and this is my fifth year at Stevenson and also my twentieth year teaching. Um, and I teach AP US history and college prep US history.
Um, I'm Junior Marchak, I teach American Studies and AP US History. And this is my sixth year at Stevenson and ten years overall teaching.
Um, I'm Naomi Pierce, I have been here for nine years, maybe like fifteen or so overall. Um, I teach AP US History and AP Psychology.
I'm Paul Mazuka, uh, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, this is my twenty-sixth year at Stevenson, no, excuse me, twenty-seventh, thirty-sixth overall as a teacher. One of my proud students right here, Naomi, who's also gonna be part of, uh, team with one of our students. Uh, I also teach Special Life US History, coach girls flag football, and football.
Alright, so the A-Push team wanted to start today, uh, by kind of walking you through, um, kind of how we've been transforming the US history experience. And we wanna start with a shout-out to Beulah, um, in that we're really transformed from this, um. Okay, uh, so I don't use a clicker, um, to this. Um, and so, as you can see, these are some photos of our A-Push students, um, in our classroom. Um, and the learning environment is a little different than your stereotypical, uh, US history classroom, where probably for many of us, that experience was a fact memorization and kind of student or teacher-centered, uh, direct instruction. Whereas in these snapshots of students, you can see that students are at the center. Uh, students are using choice and voice in their learning process. And so, these are again just some snapshots for us to kind of highlight the transformations that we've been doing, uh, in our courses over the last several years. Uh, so some of these activities that you're seeing, we do historical, uh, press conferences, we're doing, uh, reform recruitment fairs, historical figure dinner parties. Um, in all of these activities, students are highly engaged and they're inquiry-driven. Students are developing their perspective-taking skills, uh, critical thinking skills, uh, as well as their empowerment. Um, and certainly this work that students are, these types of activities that they're participating in throughout the year closely aligns, um, with our portrait of Stevenson graduate and the skills that we're hoping that our students walk away with when they leave, uh, Stevenson. So, I'm gonna pass the torch to Keri, who is gonna walk through how the A-Push team has been using the Student Voice Survey data to reflect on this transformation and how it's impacting our students.
So, I think the activities Kristen was talking about have been really effective in fostering a positive classroom climate, um, learning strategies that are helping them to grow, um, encouraging belonging. But one area that we looked at as an opportunity for growth was our valuing of subject. And I think we really felt that in this ever-stem-centered world, um, that we really wanted to encourage our students to see the importance of history, right? Where our democracy is only as strong as Where our democracy is only as strong as its active and informed citizens. Um, and we want them to understand that history can help them make meaning of the present and help us hopefully have a more just and equitable future. Shout out to them. So we decided, what can we do to make history more meaningful? Um, and we integrated a new project, History Fair. And we thought that this would kind of move us from the shallow end of the pool where the teacher's giving you a list, you know, for one of our dinner parties, we give you a list of the forms you can do. We tell you, we're having a dinner party, this is how you're gonna present that information. Maybe you have a couple of days to do some research and then present, we move on. We thought we wanted to have a project where students could choose their topic. So they could pick something that they're really passionate about and interested in personally. Um, and we decided instead of having, we tell you exactly how you need to present that information, they would have choices in the format to show the skills that they excelled at. A lot of these activities on the left are fairly short-term, um, and in some ways limited in depth, right? If you only have a few days in order to investigate and a short time to present. Um, we wanted to do a year-long project so that students would be able to do intensive research of their own, having to find sources, which would more closely mirror a real college history experience. And that they would be able to go into so much more depth. I feel like teaching, especially in AP classes, sort of a mile wide and an inch deep here, they would really be able to drill down, um, over the course of a full semester. And in the spring, when we looked at our data again, we could saw increases in alignment with their values and usefulness to their daily life and usefulness to the future, how their own personal interests have gone up. And the only thing we saw go down was how much they cared about their grades. And honestly, if that's the one thing going down, we're happy about that. So we hope that part of this is a reflection of having the opportunity to really delve into a project of their real personal interest. And to kind of talk a little bit more about that project in depth is me.
Yeah, thanks Carrie.
Sure.
So when the A-Push team kind of discussed how with our rigorous academic curriculum, what pathways can we actually allow students to choose and research a topic? And along with coaching, um, you know, Flag and Boim, also one of the History Fair moderators. So we kind of thought what a perfect marriage of the param or set by the National History Day, that we can bring that into A-Push where our students, like Carrie said, have the opportunity to one, have agency of pick a topic that they, that speaks to them. And also a collaborative aspect where them and peers are gonna do college-level research on the topic of their choice. And so History Fair, you have the opportunity to make a, you know, a classic board, the tri-fold board, or create a documentary, which is fascinating. Uh, the skills, uh, our students have are, you know, they're spectacular. And creating a website. So they have, uh, not only do they get to pick the topic, they also get to pick the medium in which they want to show their research. And it is, uh, an entire year-long project where we involve the librarians, ILC, teach them how to research skills that, uh, they can then carry on hopefully to the next level. So it was a, it was a good marriage.
I'd like to show you guys some examples from our History Fair, uh, last May. Uh, we were really fortunate to get a wide variety of different topics. As Paul, yeah, as Mazuka just said right here. It basically, we had three different things that you could use as your medium to show your, your knowledge and your learning. So we had the poster board, which is like the tri-fold. Um, here in the middle, you can see there's the little champion, uh, thing there. This group put in a lot of time and effort. They started from just looking at the basics of feminism to really exploring it throughout, um, over a centuries worth, taking it all the way to the modern day. Uh, we felt they did an excellent job of really, you know, going to depth about this particular topic. And, um, just talking to them, they were able to stand before their, their tri-fold and really share information that they, they knew. And they, they were very proud of it. And we're actually gonna hear from them in a little bit, one of our videos. Other topics we had, Harmony in Harlem for like the Harlem Renaissance. Um, we also had topics related to immigration. You know, we are a very diverse school community, which is a wonderful asset here at Stevenson. And I saw a variety of different topics related to immigration, especially since, uh, we've seen immigration laws change since the nineteen sixties. And many of our students and their families came to this country as a result of that. Um, we did have a wide variety of websites, so students would like to use that platform. They were just able to take, you know, the ideas and, and put it into a different form. Here are some examples we have up here. We had like the space race, uh, we had different social movements, um, that a lot of students did for their websites. And then we also had documentaries. We're not gonna play any of them for you today, but some of them were quite interesting. Like here we have hip-hop parodies from street debates. Just like the wide variety of interests that these kids showed. And then like just their personal talent in terms of making this. I mean, I don't think I could do that good of a job as they were doing. It was quite phenomenal.
So, well, the, the theme was turning points. So the, all these are revolving around, uh, what the students picked as a turning point in history. This year is rights and responsibility, so that theme will change. So all these are, these students feel these are major turning points in, in history.
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna pass it over here to Jean.
Um, all right, so over the next few slides, we're gonna look at how we related History Fair to the Castle Competencies, very specifically social awareness, one of those interpersonal skills in the green, to self-management, one of those intrapersonals in the orange. Uh, so our History Fair day, we have students explore different projects. They even listen to some of their classmates' presents. And after that, we ask them to fill out a reflection. Uh, one part of this reflection, we were really excited to include, to like make that explicit connection back to that social awareness competency, was a space to, for the students to give a peer a shout-out. So you see some of those on the board. Uh, we bolded some words that we thought really stood out. But looking through all of their responses, we saw students really acknowledge what they learned from their classmates as well as praise the bravery, creativity, and innovation that they saw in these projects. Uh, we also asked, we also wanted to give students a space for them to reflect inward on their own experience. So we asked them a question on this reflection. What did you find the most meaningful about the History Fair experience? Um, so we had many students talk, and Carrie kind of mentioned this earlier before, of being able to choose a topic of their own interest and really study it in depth and go wherever it took them. As well as we also had students really mention how important it was for them to learn self-management, to make their own plan, to follow through. So throughout the year, we saw students kind of really learn that their success in the classroom was dependent on the management of themselves and the management of their time. And so I'm gonna pass it back to Paul, um, to introduce this next video.
So, um, we asked our four, uh, grand champions if they'd make a little video, uh, kind of expressing their whole thought process of from beginning to end. And what you're about to hear over the next two minutes are students who, uh, get to pick their own topics, or definitely student agency will come up. And their collaboration process is, was wonderful. And they start talking over each other too, so they. They really, really got close.
They're actors.
And what I love about it, you also can hear the great teenage honesty. They're gonna tell, they told us what they thought initially when the project was assigned to them. And so, uh, you love the honesty of teenagers. But then they wrap up with advice to our students this year. So when the, the peers giving advice to peers, that, that, as a teacher, there's nothing better than that. Super happy about that.
And we played this video for all of our classes this year when we introduced the project. So they're really sort of giving to, to the next year's group.
Any questions? Who won the grand champion award for History Fair?
I'm Carrie.
I'm Deha.
I'm Sophie.
I'm Cindy. And we're gonna tell you a little bit about History Fair.
Yes.
It was tournament tide, the second wave of feminism.
Yes, and we didn't start out with that topic actually. We first started out with Roman Reign, but since that was too small, we had to think bigger. We got to feminism, but that was too big, so we settled onto one era. And then moving on to thesis and research.
So first before my thesis question about, um, our research question, by stating what we really wanted to study and what we wanted to find out about the second wave of feminism. It's essentially a research paper on a tri-fold board, a website, or a video.
Yes.
And like moving on to research, we cannot emphasize how important research is. So when we, uh, did the research log, we finished it, but it was just not enough to make our project really like appealing and, uh, like.
Excellent.
Excellent, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Make sure you get research done, seriously, because. Um, although it sounds like really boring and really, oh, it's so.
Nice.
So we actually really enjoyed it. And we actually started like an assembly line that I did for. So, um, Sophie was working on the layout. And Cindy was working on like the modeling part.
And writing the statement.
Yes, and then here, I thought we're working on printing.
Printing and cutting and.
Doing the art, like a little bit on the drawing.
Um, so make it visually feel like, like have lots of colors, have lots of images and drawings. Um, here's a picture of our poster.
As you can see, we made the boards really big, so.
We had a lot of color.
Yes.
A lot of ours.
So make it really visually appealing. And then second above is don't procrastinate, get your task done.
Yes.
Um, and make sure when.
Don't be like, I have, oh, I have time. No, you don't.
Yeah. A thing that you're really passionate about, otherwise you won't feel burnt out. So make sure you have the motivation to actually complete on the, to complete this project.
And my last one, please, make sure you check in with your teachers a lot. Um, they're willing to help you.
And ask for help when you do need it.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So overall, we brilliant here at this project and we hope you do too. Have fun with it.
Have fun.
So cool.
Right, they're, they're, they're so.
So cute.
Okay, um, so in allowing, as you heard, um, some of the student agencies that they really enjoyed, with some of that follow-up survey that we asked them, um, the number one thing that they said that resonated the most with them and that they found most valuable was being able to choose a topic of personal interest. And also really enjoyed the idea of, um, collaboration and appreciated learning for learning, the knowledge that they gained from actually doing the research. So we kind of used all of this information, um, in terms of being able to edit and add on to then what we moved on with for this year. So we've kind of taken their feedback, um, to be able to improve. As we asked them, what suggestions do you have? The biggest thing was more class time. As she said, you think you have enough time, no you don't. Which I say at the end of every class period when I run out of time. But that was the biggest thing. And so we really made a concerted effort as a team to build in extra workdays both semesters, especially actually first semester when they're working on the research part. A second semester is more the visual. Um, and so really allowing them to, to dictate a little bit and recognize, um, their time management and planning and what that actually entails to be successful when they are attempting to, um, turn in something that they are proud of and have enjoyed working on. Um, I think a lot of them by the end realized they wanted more time, um, to be able to have a proud, uh, product that they were proud of. Um, and so we've kind of taken this project overall to, um, allow for our students to help themselves, um, by building resilience. Um, as a team, we read the book Never Enough last year and really, um, tried to, to pick some ideas that we could work on with the kids of time management and this idea of self-management. And at the end of the day, realizing that when you are learning about something that you're interested in, that is going to infinitely help your ability to manage your time and to come up with, um, something that you're proud of and be engaged and active in your learning, so. That's all we got.
So good, so good. Questions?
Well, first of all, love the shirts.
Yeah.
First, it fantastic. The project is, it's really impressive. I have to ask you, can you help me understand? We often talk, um, about the, the education process in how you're teaching, how that's different than what it was when I was in school. Help me understand a bit more about the day-to-day, the check-ins, the, how did this? Obviously, they weren't just running off and doing an independent study and then coming back. How were you working with them? How were they working together? How, were you setting the standards, the, telling them what they need? Can you fill in a little bit of the teaching element here? I'd love to understand it better.
Do you wanna talk specifically like History Fair or just kind of some of, I guess we can just stick to History Fair?
Well, let's, let's use it.
Yeah.
I actually could spend all night and talk to you.
No, yes.
Um.
No, there's definitely supports built along the way. And that's something like, as it, like, we just started in the last week or two rolling it out with our students for this school year. Um, so we have like a assignment structure that kind of lays out with the students, like gives them a timeline too. So it's not just like, hey, here's, we're gonna give it to you just in chunks. So they get to see the big picture and where we're heading with things. And so that way too, with that self-management piece of like them knowing, okay, when are my busy times academically, socially, things that I'm involved in? Uh, but like I said, building in that class time is really important. Um, we had time beginning with research where we're going into the ILC. We're taking our classes in and we're having our, working with our librarians with us so that it's not just, I'm the sole person they're trying to meet with. And we have large classes, you know, so I have a class of twenty-eight. So being able to check in with each of those students, but being able to have a librarian and even another additional resource in the room so that we, we can be working with students more of that kind of one-on-one. Cause you're right, it is kind of them doing like their own independent study. Um, they also can work in a group, which I think also helps because they have each other to kind of troubleshoot some issues. Um, we provide, uh, research logs that they're filling out. So that also keeps them focused in terms of the research that they're compiling and that they're gathering. But it is, it is a lot of instruction, teaching students how to do research, how to create an annotated bibliography. So we've allocated a lot of our curriculum time, we're taking away to invest in this because we think it's really important. These are the skills that they are doing in college, um, that I don't unfortunately think they get a lot of in high school. So that's why we've said it's really important for us to take multiple days a semester to provide students with that. So, and.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So I know Maz, twenty-seven years, I think, and.
Here, yes.
Yeah, and, and others, twenty years teaching. So twenty-seven years ago, like it was a race, like to get through the A-Push curriculum, right? Like it was.
Yeah, I'm still trying to catch. Still, yeah.
Yeah, so how, tell me how, like that dissonance that you all must feel, right? Like, because this is so amazing, right? And I could see how for kids, like, yeah, valuing subjects since a belonging problem, those scores are going up. Does it create an, I'm sure it creates anxiety for you, but does it create anxiety for them? Like, are we getting all the other content that we need? Do you know what I'm asking Maz?
Of course, so, um, I'm gonna speak for myself, but if I, if you guys wanna add in. Two things have kind of allowed me to just, I, this is important. One, in two thousand and fifteen College Board kind of restructured, that allowed us a little bit of, we don't need to know, you know, every single, you know, the Pendleton Act of eighteen eighty-three, uh, which was one of Brad's favorite acts. So that allowed us to, uh, kind of play around with the, with the curriculum and.
And so the board knows, they went from, I think, eighty question, eighty multiple choice questions down to like thirty-five, forty, fifty, yeah. So almost, almost half the number.
Right, it's kind of scaled it down away from like a trivia pursuit test to more of a skills-based test. And so we embraced that. And, um, you know, I, from a personal standpoint, if they see for me as a teacher that this is really important for, like, for us, as though, they're not gonna get all stressed out about, oh, I, I need to know this. I need, I have been teaching A-Push since oh-one, the scores are, the scores are always gonna be the scores. We have amazing children, right? Um, and so they, there's that vibe from our team, like this is important to us. We will get you to May ninth or tenth, whatever the day is, that's gonna take care of itself. Just trust us and our, our kids trust us. And we.
That's great.
We, we value that.
Right.
It's a great team.
And that's quite an evolution for the team, cause I think twenty-one years ago, people would have been like, God, we can't take the timeout.
Correct, right.
You mean.
Absolutely.
But a lot of factors go into that, so that's, that's really, really great.
We also make, I'm so sorry, a great use of the time after exam, rather than just having, you know, movies for two weeks or something. Now we have a project that they can be working on, since we have to have covered the content for the test. But this is the time for them to collaborate and work together. And then that's when we have our fair as well.
That's awesome.
So sort of making better use of that time than we used to.
So having this fair, where did you set up? At the fieldhouse, the Wood Commons, I mean, where physically did you set up? And then who came?
Um, so we use our awesome PWC classrooms. So we set up in one that we would make in a double. But honestly, we could, last year was our first year running. We could, last year was our first year running it, it was our pilot year, if you will, so we're already making adjustments for this year. Wanting almost like a room for just the exhibits, because most students do the posters, and then a separate room for digital viewing, for video documentaries and websites. Um and basically, students attend, um it's usually the the last day of regular classes before final exams. So it's after APs are over, um it's that last week of school, so it's really a fun celebratory event for our students. So they attend during their A push class periods, but we do open it up, um and this year maybe we'll expand in who's coming and attending. We did have, I think, a few social studies classes, teachers that brought in their non-A push classes in, just to see. Because again, the, as we showed with the exemplars, the work they do is remarkable. Um and watching them teaching each other and taking this really informed action about, hey, this is what I'm learning in US history. And how something that I'm passionate about is really cool to see, so, yeah, so it's a work in progress, but it's, yeah, it's pretty neat, so it's done during the school day.
Who chose the grand champions? Is that you guys or do they vote? You all vote?
We did. We did, um we did have students, like some of like the, you know, they gave shout-outs.
Shout-outs, yeah.
But it's, I mean, we're talking four, five hun- four hundred, at least four hundred projects. So to have students nail down pick one winner, so we, the teachers, we kind of went through. And so as like the students are in there, we're also walking around and looking at each other's students' work and evaluating it. And give them little certificates and, that's great.
And those skills are so, you know, thinking like historian development and those skills are just gonna pay off in college, no matter what they study.
Yeah, mm-hmm, exactly.
Correct.
I have a question, a little off-topic, but I've been wondering this lately, with the, with all that goes on in the world. Has it become more difficult to teach government and history and social studies and all of those things with the craziness, or are the kids just, it's just the world they know?
Once this thing comes to a rest, man, we have a feeling this question is gonna be asked. Blood testing.
Okay, sure.
Seen the evolution and such, you know, he can speak to it for that.
Yes. Right.
How old is, when your ninety-three is?
Oh, I know.
Little Ducaucus election back in the. Yeah, you have to be, you have to be sensitive, um because you know, ever. The emotions are obviously running high and you don't know what's coming from home, so I, this, our whole department kind of delivers it an aspect of. At least from our team, from historical, like, so we can kind of teach about the elections that have happened a hundred years ago and so how similar they are to right now. That really kind of helps put things in perspective without people digging in on their sides, because that's that's no good for anybody. So we we kind of allow that the the lens of history to really help give a greater context. Because un-unfortunately, all this that's going on right now, we've seen it all, a hundred years ago.
It's not so much what to think, it's like teach kids how to think.
So that for me, the project, that's what we're working on, right? They have to have their sourcing information, they have to be mindful of where they're getting information and.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Reminding them that Tic Tac is brain rot and going from there, um but like really helping them navigate different sources. Um and and recognize like where you are learning things in school, we are hopefully being as, like, objective, uh you know, information givers. Um and that they can help to evaluate where that information comes from.
All right, you guys, well, thank you.
Thank you, I I didn't meet, we're gonna.
No, no.
It's just been something I've thought of.
So much, really, really amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You, you also can take cookies on the way out. Feel free, feel free. Yep, the government team.
Oh, the government team, yes.
All right, well, absolutely amazing, um thank you, Brad, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, uh we have our approval of our twenty-four, twenty-five goals, projects and initiatives. Uh this is a voice vote, we brought this to you as a first reading in August. We talked about these at the retreat in early August, and over the course of the last month. Mark and Wendy have been working with the administrative team to get all of those action steps identified. And thank you to Wendy, who's kind of improved upon our processes and included that data piece to it as well. So making sure that all of our directors are working with Wendy and Tony and their team to make sure that any evaluation of the progress that we're making is rooted in data. So I I really appreciate that. So tonight, uh we're recommending that the board approve the action sets for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year uh as presented. So move.
Second.
Thank, any questions? I have a question about how this, the big document comes about with all the action steps, do the directors, they write their own? And do they have some guidance?
Mark and Wendy, they.
They have. Up with the directors and work together to sort of brainstorm ideas for each school project and initiatives. And then they spend time working with their core team leaders um to really bring that work alive into their discussions with the division. So there's a lot of work that's done at the division level too, to sort of generate some good ideas, this is best to guide their team. There's a lot of background that's.
It would be collectively hundreds of hours of work.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it did like, like S E L, obviously Lori um supports that work and supported them with with those. Louise has um has talked to and worked with different directors with their action steps. And now this year, Tony um is with that that data piece.
Yeah.
His team is now going back to see like, okay, what are directors looking for, what are they wanting?
Okay.
And kind of making their priority list and then circling back with them on it.
And we, and just so you know, we do a pretty, pretty good job of not allowing ourselves to get distracted, you know, throughout the year. So like if this is what we said we're gonna be working on.
This is where we come back.
Exactly, yes, so it's like we don't, we're not gonna chase the next shiny object, you know, like this is our work.
We're off, we come back, yeah.
And then at the end of the year, we report all that back to you in that big thick uh end-of-year report, so.
Right, right. Anything else? Okay, Terry, could you please pull the, oh, it's a vote.
What's a voice vote?
Sorry, it's all in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Oppose?
Well, so far it carried.
Okay, um and then next item is approval of our curriculum course proposals uh for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We've had a chance to go through these pretty extensively back in the spring, talked about some of these things at the retreat. Um earlier tonight, we had the opportunity to talk about the science proposal, but there are also other changes, including a new course, uh intermediate Mandarin Chinese. Um change in grade levels for some of our social studies courses. Some of these are just name changes, Mark, um the substantive ones uh are the ones that we that we discussed. So tonight, we're bringing forward um recommendations for curriculum course proposals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Please have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
One other quick thing I forgot to mention is we brought you the um, the letter of intent in April and May, course proposals now. And then Jamie works with all of the directors over the course of the next a couple months to develop our coursebook, um that gets published in October and November. And believe it or not, kids are already starting to choose classes in December, or late November, early December, so that's the timeline. So generally, we're all kind of buttoned up for next year by the end of March, so.
Any other questions for Eric or Mark? You ready?
I don't have a question, I just, I just have a comment, I I had some extra questions about this and I I appreciated the time that Mark and Wendy, Steve and Christie and Eric spent with me. Um talking about, I just wanted to say that.
Anytime, anytime.
Okay, Terry, could you please call the board?
Ben Joseph.
Yes, aye.
Gerson.
Aye.
Moon's eye, Tyer?
No.
Frost?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Carries five to one.
Okay, the next item is our uh approval of a three-year data sharing agreement with C L C and and Stevenson. Um this is something that we bring forward, uh how often, Pia?
Annually?
Yeah, we do it every year, so let's do it again, um.
Uh this is a three-year term though, we've changed it.
This is a three-year term, so we won't do it again for three more years. Uh and this is just so that um we can share uh specific um data uh between C L C and Stevenson. Um C C L C is our second largest feeder, um trivia, what is the first largest?
You, Brian.
There you go, uh and then C L C, so it's nice to have this data sharing agreement with them so we can talk about individual students, so bringing that to you for your.
Could I get a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, Terry, could you please pull the board?
Gerson.
Aye.
Moon's eye, Tyer?
Yes.
Frost?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Ben Joseph?
Aye.
Carries.
Okay. Um next item is approval of board policy updates, um thank you, thank you, thank you as always to Pia for putting in hours of work to um make this process uh easier for us to look at um and to review. So we had a chance uh last month as a first reading, um and we kind of pointed out at that time, anything that um we recommended that you take a look at. Um but um those were the first um couple items. Um but Pia, anything of note that the board should review?
Nothing material, this is all just a precursor to press one sixteen, it's a lot of wordsmithing, getting ready.
So remember, Pia's identified level A, B, C, D and E, and I don't think there's anything that was level A or B in this one, so.
No.
So tonight, we're bringing those forward for your approval.
Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any other questions? Okay, Terry, could you please pull the board?
Gerson?
Aye.
Moon's eye, Tyer?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Ben Joseph?
Aye.
Carries six to nothing.
Okay, um our enrollment report, just an update, um the state's kind of moved away from that old six-day enrollment formula. They they just ask for enrollment um and a nonspecific date, I think. Um but regardless, our enrollment change is literally every day, so you may remember last month, I shared with you informally that we were at about four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five kids, now we're up to four thousand eight hundred and seven kids. Um and uh some of those, most of those kids are in the building, some of them are out of the building. If you click on the link, you can see the enrollment report, um it's just there for your information and review, you don't need to vote on it, just FYI.
Can I?
But you can definitely ask questions.
Um Sean, have you, um. I, I don't know where we sit with the demographic for.
Yeah.
Any, where are we at in that process now?
So from the last projection, we're still at the forty-eight to forty-nine. Um we should be getting an updated one here in the next month, Pia and I just had a meeting with them early, or no, last week. Um uh there was a little confusion about the accounts when they changed from, when they changed ownership companies. Um but we have now straightened that out so that it's a seamless transaction. And we should have them shortly.
And is this tracking what our, what their projections have been?
It is, this was the big jump year um to the forty-eight hundred and it's come to fruition.
And this, I'm trying to remember, basically, we should be getting close to plateauing?
We should go up, uh I think it kind of bounces a little bit uh between forty-eight and forty-nine, but then settle like around forty-eight, twenty-ish.
Well, yeah, let's start talking, let's stop talking about it. Uh I hopefully, we're gonna get the report soon, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh but we are, um just so you know, we do have extra capacity in terms of, we are very, very, very tight right now. But that is because we have um three or four multipurpose rooms that we are leaving open during the day as multipurpose rooms. We're kind of holding out hope that they can continue to be multipurpose rooms. But as soon as we're kind of busting at the seams, we'll, we'll be able to capture those spaces and and we'll be fine as far as space is concerned, if that's what you were wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be okay.
There's at least five rooms that we can convert into legitimate classrooms.
It takes away the ability to use them as multipurpose rooms, which is a different problem, but you know, we you, we will not come back to you and say, we need more classrooms, you gotta build this in addition. We're not, we won't hear a say.
Thank you.
Then we get to do what I wanted to.
Oh, that's my so, the social studies. No new text. Okay, um so personnel, uh you can see all the normal um uh items in there, including uh the personnel report, uh which is part of the consent. We will not need an executive session uh following the meeting, and then Sean, that takes us to your section. And approval of contract for event photography services, which we shared last month, but.
Correct.
Quick summary.
Yep, um we basically um need to, for our protection, uh for the district's protection. Uh I think it's important that we actually go with a a legitimate photographer that has the licensure and the insurance that is necessary to um protect the district in case something happens. Um but uh we have so many events, um and Jamie and her team do a great job of covering those and deciding which events need to have those services. We're in a very visual-dominated industry right now. Um this is going to um pretty much be cost-neutral. Um so really, the the litmus or the impetus behind this was to get that insurance and protect the district from a liability standpoint. So we're we're codifying that with a contract now.
Generally, we were paying approximately the same amount of money.
Correct.
Cobbled together, this provides us a layer of protection with their insurance.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Could I please have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any other questions for Sean or Jamie?
This is the guy that's kind of been doing it, right?
Mm-hmm, he is.
Yeah, you've seen the website, it's, there's good pictures.
Correct.
Does he also post on on Instagram?
Yep.
Under the, what's the name, like the, but that's officially, that's this guy, right?
Yes, yeah, these are good too, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, they're good.
Yeah, he's good.
Okay, Terry, could you please pull the board?
Sure, Moon's eye, Tyer?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Ben Joseph?
Aye.
Gerson?
Aye.
Carries six to zero.
Next one, you're gonna see if there's a little bit of a consistent theme, which is risk management. Um so this next one, uh when we purchase uh electricity and gas, we try to buy it on a futures market to um hedge our risk and lock it at a price that makes it stable for our budgeting processes, processes. Um we are close to uh the end of the natural gas and electricity pricing, so we want to extend it for one more year. Um while we still determine whether or not um the current vendor is a vendor that we want to work with for a long-term again. They have met our needs, um but we are doing our due diligence to make sure that they're still gonna meet our needs coming forward. Um so tonight, um I am gonna be asking um the board to approve the purchase of natural gas uh and electricity for calendar year twenty-five. Um the one note is you'll see that there are ranges of pricing, but the downside to um engaging in or buying on the futures market is the price is changing. Um so the price that we have been locked in um has been significantly low over the course of our four-year contract. We've had uh the Ukraine crisis, um that was uh skyrocketed natural gas prices and we were paying very little at that time. Um so we definitely hedged the risk um for the district and made our budget dollars go significantly further. So I'll be bringing back to the board in our meeting memo exactly where we ended up on the contract.
Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll move it here.
Second.
Any other, I, you kind of answered my question, but I was wondering how long this one, because it seems like this was a longer one.
Yeah, we're just doing, we're, like I said, we're extending it just for a year while we ensure that, um and do our due diligence that this is the best funding.
Is this bidable? Are there a lot of companies that do this?
Yes, and one of the vendors that we're looking at actually does a reverse auction, um and will have the suppliers bid to them and they become basically a broker.
So over the course of the next year, you'll go out to bid and make something, okay.
Correct. Do we know s- school districts do this, Sean, or like? Um s- some do, a a lot belong to a cooperatives that do it on their behalf. Uh back when Mark McLeaney was here, my predecessor, we were part of a co-op, um but the co-op um had different needs than what we were doing. And when we have, because we have the natural gas peaker plants, it really is in our best interest, because those can serve as backup generators for the entire campus in case we go down. And when the price of electricity is really high, we have a formula. And when the price of electricity is really high, we have a formula that we use uh, based on the price of natural gas and we can actually run our peaker plant, um, at a cheaper price than what electricity is and then we can sell the electricity that we bought on a contract back to the grid, um, to, yeah, basically protect or take advantage of remains from ComEd as well, so.
Thank you, Jim, yes. Any other questions for Sean? Hey, Terry, could you please pull the board?
Sure, Tyer?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Ben Yosef?
Aye.
Gorison?
Aye.
Moon's aye, carries.
Last month, we talked about, uh, the need to for emergency repairs for some, uh, ComEd cables that were underground. Uh, unfortunately, this year, we're bringing to the board some emergency repairs for the storm that ripped through. I honestly, I think it ripped through Lincolnshire the worst, um, I did talk to the village of Lincolnshire, they have on record that were, there were seventy-five mile an hour winds that went through here, um, but, uh, we did, um, for the first time have some storm damage, uh, the wind got underneath a a portion of the eve on the roof and basically peeled the roof on the uh, point, the architectural point, uh, it peeled the roof back like a film on a TV dinner, if you're familiar with those. Um, so, stating my age a little bit, but, um, so, it's what it did.
Seriously? Oh my god.
Um, so it it tore off about sixty percent of the roof, um, uh, Gilbane is helping us with the pricing, um, on this, they're getting three quotes. Um, the bids were due today, they're gonna go through, um, that process, uh, we're gonna go with, uh, the lowest qualified, uh, vendor, um, Waukegan Roofing did, uh, in the meantime, uh, make the, or put the roof basically back together and make it, uh, watertight. Um, I will note that, um, our property insurance will cover the damages associated with less than two, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. So, uh, this is why we have that insurance, um, it's actually my first property claim. Um, and then, uh, in case anybody's curious, as long as we have a three-fourths or more, uh, vote of the board, um, we can, um, go around and do not have to, um, go through the bidding process, so this can be the lowest qualified bidder from just quotes that we've received.
Because it was an emergency.
And because it was an emergency, correct, and that's, that's part of the state statute, so tonight, we are, uh, uh, recommending that the Board of Ed, Board of Education, uh, authorize the emergency repairs to building and campus as a result of the damage from the storm on, uh, August twenty-seventh.
Could I please get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is that Frost?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay, question I always ask, so how is this going to impact school and students and maybe all that?
So, um, we have, uh, an upcoming non-attendance day, um, so we have built that into, um, the work so that they can work longer on that day, uh, and finish it up, uh, the next day.
Will ComEd be here at the same time?
No, ComEd works at night, thankfully, um, so they will, uh, we will throw off the power and we can always reuse our uh, peaker plants, um, as a backup, so we can, uh, don't have to concentrate on ComEd power.
Any more questions?
Good questions.
Hey, Terry, could you please pull the board?
Certainly, Frost?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Ben Yosef?
Aye.
Gorison?
Aye.
Moon's aye, Tyer?
Yes.
Carries.
Do we have any other, like, tree foundings, if we have, have to do some of that kind of stuff?
Oh, yeah, and that's included in the replacement, we lost a bunch of trees, we lost a circuit board on one of our air handling units, um, blew a shadow over completely. Sixteen panels on fencing, it was pretty substantial.
I drove in that night, right after it blew through, because band was rehearsing that night, I had to pick up, so they kept going in the dark, they had moved inside because of the weather, but I drove onto campus and just, as it had passed through and it was
Yeah, I. I already left campus and and when I got the first call, I'm like, it's not even raining at my house. Um, and I drove, when I drove here, I got off at twenty-two and I felt like I was driving on gravel with all the tree branches and debris and it was it was quite fascinating. Um, the last thing I have is a first reading tonight, um, we will be discussing this in more action, or, excuse me, in greater detail um, at our upcoming finance committee meetings, but the short story is that we will be asking the board for a resolution of reimbursement, which gives, uh, this board and future boards more flexibility when it comes to cash management um, as well as bond management, so.
If we have a meeting on, sorry, excuse me, October first, first, finance meeting, and we'll
October first, right?
Correct.
Do a deep dive into all things.
Yes, and Liz Haniseal.
And Liz Haniseal, Liz will be there.
Liz will be here?
Liz Haniseal will be there to, um, provide additional knowledge.
I'm assuming.
Okay.
So, uh, we also have a couple items for consent, uh, and the FOIA requests, and that brings us to consent.
Okay, could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Terry, could you please pull?
Sure, no?
Aye.
Ben Yosef?
Aye.
Gorison?
Aye.
Moon's aye, Tyer?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Oh, and carried.
All right, um, just a couple final items, um, we have included a, uh, just for your information, a list of all of our core leaders and team leaders across all the divisions, just so you can see among our faculty members who are teachers are, who are stepping up into different leadership roles, uh, within the divisions, so, um, you can just take a look at that in case you're interested, uh, we also have included our class of twenty twenty-four um, report, um, that identifies kind of where they ended up, so to speak, uh, upon leaving Stevenson, so ninety-six, you can see ninety-six percent of the class is college-bound, eighty-five percent attending four-year schools, um, seventy percent attending a public school, twenty-nine percent private, thirty-six percent plan to begin college here in Illinois, which is interesting. Over a hundred and eighty-one different campuses that our kids have gone to, um, University of Illinois, um, remains our top school. Um, and then we have, um, uh, University of Illinois Chicago, Indiana, Purdue, Ohio State, um, C L C should be in there, oh, most probably the four-year schools, yeah, 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 uh, C L C's in there as well, so we're we're covering the Big Ten pretty well, it looks like, and, um.
That's four years. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I would hope so.
There you go, some other statistics as well, so anyway, it's just super interesting. Um, also included an update from the E L C as well, so you can take a look at, uh, what's happening there. Um, things are just getting started, Terry, for the school year.
They they are, and, um, they've the E L C West has got more students this year than last year, which is wonderful, um, and they are really just moving right along, it's a great little operation.
Good.
For the kids.
Terry, how, how many of the, um, you see there's more kids, are they all Stevenson kids, are they from other schools?
Steven, I can't hear you, what?
I'm sorry, wait, the, the kids at at E L C, uh, West?
From other schools.
They come from other schools.
From other schools, from other schools, they're tuition.
Tuition-based students.
Tuition-based students.
Tuition, yeah.
In addition to ours.
Yeah, we we open it up to tuition-based students, because m- many school districts, which are not as large as ours, Fox Lake, um, Round Lake, uh, w- w-.
Longham, Gray's Lake.
Gray's Lake, uh, have maybe three or four students that need this kind of education and they are unable to provide it and they, then they, they chose not to be at C D O, and they chose to be tuition students, um, at the, uh, E L C West. Uh, so this is, it's a high school and post-high school, uh, grouping of students and they, they really do exciting exciting things and it's a, it's a very good place for, for not only our students, but for students in in the Lake County area.
The nice thing is, the state is now reimbursing, um, districts for the cost of that tuition, not all of it, but most of it.
Yes.
So not only do we get more re, not only do we get reimbursed for the kids that we send to the E L C, but other districts will be more inclined to send kids to the E L C because it's a better program and now they'll get funding from the state.
Right.
So overall, it's kind of a, it's a great thing, um, but it's also a great thing for the E L C that they can continue to grow and expand their programs, provide more opportunities for kids.
It's a highly sought-after program in, uh, the community as well.
Yeah.
Many are looking at the great things as Terry has said, that are going on there and want, they're requesting their children.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you also see, um, kind of an updated, um, schedule of meetings, um, and it looks like we have added an optional finance meeting with the auditors on Wednesday, October thirtieth, from ten to eleven-thirty. If you would like to attend in person, um, you are welcome to, but we can also be sure that we can zoom that meeting as well. So it'll be a hybrid meeting, um, if you're interested. Um, and then, um, last note, uh, you should have received a paper copy of an invitation, but um, Trish is inviting all of us, including our board members, to, uh, the Hall of Fame induction celebration on Saturday, September twenty-eighth at ten-thirty uh, in the P W C, and, uh, it's always a great.
It's a nice event.
It's a very nice event, um, and it's always just great to, uh, see some of those old students and seeing them get recognized, so.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if any of those names sound familiar, but.
Hey, you just said it's a, it's a nice.
Well, Cal Mo sounds familiar.
It's, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a really nice event, but it's a really moving and emotional event, because people get up there and
Yeah.
It is, mhm.
Uh, share stories of their lives and and their experiences and it's, it's really moving.
It's really, it's really nice.
Yeah.
It's really nice, we're going.
Good.
Yep, I'm going too.
All right.
Are you going to him?
Okay, good.
All we have.
All right, could I get a motion to adjourn?
All right.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, you're adjourned.
Fun, fun, thank you, everybody. You get a pass?